Today, we are going to have a sixth special session, the House of Delegates, eleven of the members, and we will go over the order. We will be able to talk about the other things, and we will go over the business of the day. Speaker, come on.
Speaker Anastasio.
Aye.
Delegate Adurang.
Aye.
Delegate Gibbons Junior.
Aye.
Delegate Gulliverd. Floridair Kanai. Delegate Kamsong. Delegate Marino.
Maitiam.
Vice Speaker Ngiraiwet. Delegate Ngiratkak Kanai.
Aye.
Delegate Ongitobla.
Aye.
Delegate Otobla.
Aye.
Delegate Rauluk. Delegate Sinza.
Aye.
Delegate Solaplay.
Maitiam.
Delegate Talley.
Aye.
Delegate Umetaro.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker, please.
Today, I would like to ask the delegates to remember that we have been talking about the special session, and we have been talking about the delegation. One day after the year day, the ambassador said to the year day, Delegate Adurang, and the Floridair members were glad to hear that. And they were very happy. Floridair.
Today, Speaker, we have talked about the last year, Delegate Adurang, and the other members. Madam Delegate Kanai, I am here, and Senior Member Delegate Gulliverd. We have talked about the last year, Speaker, and we have talked about the last year. Speaker, we will talk about the theme of the journals, the journals for adoption. We will talk about the journals, the blankets, the fifth-day journal, the special session, eighth-day journal, the fifth-day session, fourteen-day journal, the fifth-day session, my fifth-day journal, the fifth-day session, and twenty-first-day journal, the fifth-day session.
Today, we will talk about the blankets, the five-day journals. The members, do you agree? On top. Are you satisfied, Floridair?
Today, we have talked about item six, Departmental Communications. Under item number twenty-nine, we have talked about the withdrawal of a grant funding, but certification authority. It is appropriate part of the article, and we will talk about it. Item seven, the communication, we will talk about the meeting, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and item one, we have talked about the information result of the eleven-day election. We will talk about the resolution eleven-two-one-S, organizing resolution, assembly, appointed president officers. And number one, we have talked about the communication one-three-four, and item one, we have talked about the member free certificate, and we have talked about the bill for the amendment to the House Bill number eleven-five. Today, we have talked about item ten, Speaker, we have talked about Conference Committee Report under item, the adoption of the report eleven-two, and we have talked about the House Bill number eleven-five-five-S, CD one.
Today, we will talk about the conference committee report. Today, we will talk about the delegation. Chairman of the conference, the Senate, the delegation.
the conference committee, we refer to the House Bill eleven-five-five-S, HT one, ST three, and we have entitled the bill for an act, the amendment to the title of the National Code, expand the title, moderate the energy administration, and authorize the administration to regulate the waste water, transfer the energy administration, and the Ministry of Finance, and we will amend the FY twenty-twenty-two budget, amend the cross act, and we will talk about it. Speaker, we have talked about the House Bill eleven-five-five-S, HT one, ST three. We will introduce the full meeting in November twenty-twenty-one, and we have the fifth-day special session, the eleven of the members. We will introduce, Speaker, the request of the president, Surangal Wips Junior. Today, we will pass the final meeting of the House of Delegates, and we will transmit it to the Senate on January fifth, twenty-twenty-two. The House of Delegates, we have talked about March nine. The Senate, we will talk about the amendments to the law, today, we have returned to ST three. The House of Delegates, we have talked about March nine, twenty-twenty-two. March ten, twenty-twenty-two, the House of Delegates, we have rejected the bill. The House of the Senate, we have appointed the members to the conference committee, and conference along with the chairman of the House Committee, the delegates, we have talked about the delegates. The leader, the vice-chairman, we have talked about the delegation, we have talked about it, and we will talk about the House Committee, Banking, Insurance, Financial Models, we have talked about the full total of the law. Today, we have talked about March twelve, and we have talked about the basis on the amendment to ST three. Conference, Speaker, we have talked about the first and we will consider the amendment of March seventh, the title of the national code. ST three amendment, we have added a new section, we require the energy water administration, we develop and disseminate the national water and sewage policy, and we have added a new section on conference oversight authority, the public utilities, and we have approved. House Conference, we will see if we can get clarification, and we intend to talk about the Senate, including these new sections, while the House Conference may fully agree with the Senate, and including directive, we will not develop the national water and sewage policy. But the House may consider the new section, conference oversight authority. Discussion on the function of the eleven of the members concerning oversight of state-owned enterprise, corporate governance structure of enterprises, and whether additional agency, neither of the authorities to audit or investigate, allow a review of the state-owned enterprise's operation. Specifically, Speaker, we have talked about the PPC, the state-owned enterprise, and subject to the utilities regulation by PEWA. Today, Speaker, we have talked about PEWA, and we have talked about the energy water administration. Agency of PEWA and agency in the Ministry of Finance. PEWA are responsible for regulation of energy sector, water and wastewater sector. PPC already subject to more oversight by OEK, require provide a financial statement from OEK annually. PPC's financial affairs are monitored, investigated by the public auditor. PPC's corporate governance and operations structure, we will talk about it. House Conference initiated the discussion of the Senate Conference, and whether a power should be given authority to the state-owned entities provided, because this appeals to create redundancy in unnecessary bureaucratic oversight. After we have talked about the Senate, the Conference, we have talked about the power, so we will declare a regulation requiring that PPC be audited, investigated, and have their own operations review to ensure that PPC satisfies performance target requirements, reaches policy objectives, complies with efficiency standards, and the discussion concluded with the Conference agreeing. The removal of the new section seven-eleven-A, we will talk about it, and we will investigate the review of the PPC. Next, the discussion of section five and six, the House Bill eleven-five-five-S, HT one, ST three. The sections, Speaker, make various amendments, we have talked about the physical year twenty-twenty-two budget act, appropriate additional two-point-four million for physical year twenty-twenty-two, and we have five areas of discussion. Today, we have talked about the amendment to the budget act, we will include additional appropriation of two-point-four for physical year twenty-twenty-two. The Conference acknowledged the appropriation of passport office under RPL eleven thirteen, we have accounted for and agreed to include the hundred thousand appropriation within the amount expressed in the amendment to the budget act. Today, Speaker, the amendment to the section thirteen of the budget act, we will expand the uses of six-hundred-ten thousand appropriation for the under road maintenance fund. This expansion related the new appropriation section thirty-three of the budget act. The Conference requested and received a clarification concerning the intended relationship between the section thirteen and thirty-three. Today, the senator is all aware of the appropriation under section thirty-three, and assuming we may pass the appropriation from the noncommunicable disease fund, in that the appropriation at one time, one-point-four appropriation from the balance of road maintenance fund. Conference deliberated with additional language, specifically except the appropriation from the defined uses, the title of the national code, and ultimately, we agreed to the agreement. We agreed the additional language made the amendment to separate the appropriation under the section thirteen of the budget act unnecessarily. Conference therefore agreed to remove the section thirteen, and we have amended from the House Bill eleven-five-five-S, HT one, ST three. Today, we have talked about the amendment to the lifelong subsidy program, we adjust the purpose, we adjust the eligibility requirements, and we provide a penalty for intolerance intentionally, and we will report it in the Ministry of Finance. The House received a clarification from the Senate Conference, we have amended the program. The senator, in the past, he has intended to present the agenda, the agenda, and we will see if we can get the Ministry of Finance to justify the amendments to ST three. The senator, in the past, he has presented a mission to the minister, who is in the board, the Minister of Finance, until February three, in response to the request for information to improve the lifelong subsidy program and close, we have talked about the data tables, namely, a table depicting the lifelong subsidy calculation, a lifelong subsidy value cost analysis, my lifelong utility services, my table reflecting the household income, including social security income, my minimum wages. Based on this agenda, in the conference, the Conference agreed there was enough funds to remain in FY twenty-one, two-hundred-thousand appropriation program, and pay a full cost, sell full one-hundred-fifty kilowatt electricity, five-thousand gallons of water and sewer services, and support the amendment, the eligibility requirements. The Conference agreed there was tables supporting the determination of a vulnerable household in need of subsidy are only those households with the total annual household income, and we have talked about the area within of its household, our residents are making more than six-thousand annually. Conference, based on the letter, its closure, we agreed there was adjustment to the program proposed eligibility requirement, will in need of course changes to propose eligibility requirement are necessary. Although important to note that through the House Bill eleven-five-five-S, HT one, ST three, eleven of the members, is making improvement, the lifelong subsidy program expects parallel improvement, or assuming total improvement, the subsidy program application process that will ensure the process convenient and responsive, and needs mobility of the agency. Following discussion on the proposal, eligibility requirements, Speaker, the House Conference requested a clarification on the penalties, the access for intentionally misreporting in the Ministry of Finance. The Senate Conference said that we will have dismissed the misreporting and penalize in the same manner. The penalties, all the PNC, subsection four-one-six-E, my F, incorporate those penalties by reference, but without referencing specific subsections. Penalty for misreporting in the Ministry of Finance to be fined of not less than fifty dollars nor more than thousand dollars per day, a violation of payment of electricity, water, and wastewater service unlawfully undertaken. To ensure our intent is realized, to alleviate potential confusion, penalties within twenty-seven, we have seen the subsection four-one-six, the Conference will include the reference, and we have more specific clause in the subsection. Today, we have talked about the amendment to the section thirty-three of the budget act. As mentioned above, following discussion, we resolved the relationship between thirteen and section thirteen, but section thirty-three, the Conference discussed the need for regulation, whether such regulation should be subject to the administrative act of the national code, amendments to section thirty-three mandate that the Ministry of Finance would comply with regulation, and we cover its own disposment, the monthly funds of the PPC. Conference agreed there was regulation, and we will subject to the true APA due to its time-consuming notice requirements. Today, we have talked about the amendment to appropriate one million, the cross act, private sector temporarily measure. The Conference discussed the need of the continued fund. This measure, we conclude there was one million appropriation unnecessarily, the level of the most negative impact on COVID-19 in the global pandemic. Although fully supporting the intent of the amendment, the Conference agreed there was just a couple of references, references specifically except the appropriation from defined uses cyclical resource fund under the title for the national code. Following discussions, Speaker, we have talked about the amendment, the Conference were able to come to an agreement regarding them, agreed upon changes, alignment with the purpose of the House Bill number eleven-five-five-S, HT one, ST three, and we have alleviated the potential uncertainties. Today, we have talked about the next, we have talked about the today, we have talked about page four, the page six, we have talked about the report, we have talked about the report, we have talked about the we will support the delegation. The delegation, we have talked about the subsidy, we have talked about the forty-eight, we have talked about the full one-hundred-fifty kilowatt, we will talk about financial possibility in the process. But today, we have talked about the the report, we have talked about the members of the committee, we have talked about the conference, we have talked about the members of the conference, we have talked about the we have talked about the committee, we have talked about the Speaker.
Today, Chairman, we have talked about the report. Today, we have talked about the 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 lifelong subsidy program, we have talked about the 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 Conference agreed that the table supports a determination that vulnerable households in need of subsidy are only those households with total annual household income of twenty thousand, and within each of these households, no residence is making more than six annually. Today, we have talked about we have talked about the 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 Chairman. Today, we have expanded the we have talked about 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 the twenty thousand, the ceiling income, the lifelong subsidy, we have talked about thirteen, and we have talked about the 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 twenty thousand, the ceiling income the benefit. If the other household has six thousand, there will still be the benefit of the twenty thousand. Today, we have talked about the lifelong subsidy. Today, we have talked about the Floridair. Today, Chairman, Vice Chairman, we have talked about the 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 we have talked about the
El mo kagar, terigel residential customers, the P P U C. Eh seegid sell, ngar sell a zero one, el mora five hundred kilowatt, eh omul ten cents per kilowatt, eng omo si si wim o wim mokluk. Seegidil, ngesu, agiril kagar, ra within thirty days, ra daginget ya. Magdul si, ringi, asela kamiti report. So Chairman, yes, ah Elizabeth, yanga ringi terigel, mo Elizabeth, ma unfortunate Lindia. Eng di kita malas, mera ringi mo fe, mensiwe lka aver, as much as possible, ay butokol uspe anges. Sula, speaker. Sula, ayak falau abe?
Mm, mle kala clear, mmm, mle kama ta, explanation, Chairman, mm, soal point straight up into a very clear straightforward answer. Amle kari ga saying, I got two subsidies. Nga riya, seli, lifeline, mangari sell afpak subsidies. Ah, a lifeline, na do ngali il, mora terigel, six thousand or below. Ela selli afpak subsidies, ah one member household, ah bo le ngalakra, six, let's say seven thousand, ah in camera. Tell household, mo this, mo they are qualified, adam, they qualify a household, they are qualified nil, adults. Ela kala six thousand, a salary liya lifeline. Seegidak pe, kos soha, ensi ringi, la rada, slamo siwe, sang, understand.
Konsula, ka, ka bo e delegetra, Floridir?
Mm, soal speaker, mm, soal deleget marino, ma lungil, garil. Vee, vodomota, kial, kwa se seegidil, kwa se six thousand, a omega ri. Eh ga, se eme Elizabeth, teegidil, mo tiga mo sol. Le suka me, imol blaga, six thousand, imo omega, six thousand, one, one hundred. Eh mo dea, se bel, suka, berta kai gel, troya, finance, kwa se ngari sell life. Baba til, debo, teegel mo sol, ngari se, nampe. Speaker, teang, a deleget, ngari teegidil, pa, teangri, eh teegidil, ludog, mo albe kla adro gwi. Terigel teegidil, ma dea, se, ngasi teegidil, deleget marino, amo guse, teegidil, logi mokluk, eh teegidil, be kla adro gwi, amalari. Speaker.
Ka bo e, ka falau abe?
Mm, dek, na ha dek, I need a straight answer. Two sub, subsidy, a one mora lifeline, a one mora afpak. Ma one member household, eh ngalakra six thousand, tell household, eligible, afpak and ya, that's the question.
Disqualified. Sula, ka, ka falau abe?
Yap, speaker. Se teal blaga, hadi la luwe, kudombo, dek, sal, wim, ringi.
Yes, you are correct, Chairman. Sell subsidy lifeline, seegidil, six thousand, a trigger, eh se bel, ngarriya, adam, mo dea, Elizabeth, suka, six thousand. Lifeline subsidy, afpak, across the board, el up to, five hundred kilowatt, eh ten cents per kilowatt. Across the board, everybody, ndeja, six thousand, ma twenty thousand. Seegid, se mo mesi, ringi, ngara, committee report, roli si, ringi, mulo se, halikot. Up to one point four million, so much, maybe necessary, shall come from road maintenance fund. El mo, sorry, start, teegel afpak assistance. Within thirty days, la, mga teang, eh teegid, Minister of Finance, mo promulgate the rules and regulation. Legel, teegidil, ngesu, el mora be kla, eh effective, thirty days later, Minister of Finance, armula regulation. El mora automatic monthly disbursement of fund to P P U C, equalling, equalling to the total sum of subsidy, to be paid for the ten cents per kilowatt, girela afpak, for residential P P U C customers during that month. Seegid, everybody, sula, eh, speaker.
Bla, bladega falau abe, la mo il?
Oi, ka bo e, eh delegetra, Floridir?
Speaker, akte, akte, lka, masen, discussion, di ya, mm, seli liya Chairman, kwa se, seegidil, twenty thousand, ceiling. Seegidal, aklo, tutel el, highlight, teangri, la, masu kwa, dea, la, teal household, debo, ay, ne, singa, dea, la, ngalakra, lu, te la, la, Elizabeth. Tat, tat si, ndakado, sa, da, wa, six thousand, ma wa, seven thousand. Eh speaker, ngariya, gdekida, ai samra el. Eh adra blu, rem, seegidil, kwa se, kud, kudma, amalara, da, le, la, duda, subsidy. Ma adra blu, ma, amre, ngasuleth, ma, ngasuleth, members, god speaker, members. Eh diregal, man muta, adra P U C, mta, ma, ngasuleth, le. Te diregal, the service provider, eh diregal, adra blu, la, amo mi, du, mo haraw. Ay gal guk, ah, mandali, bil sir ti, mm, teegidil, subsidy, gide, awal, le help, ra, adra kumbalii. Mm, diregal, adra kumbalii, speaker, ngariya, member, kumbalin, tiga, ala, ba, ra, P U C. Guk, mesi, teegidil, ma, ngasuleth, eh, girela, teegidil, subsidy. Kwa di soha, not, seegidil, speaker, sula.
Sula, eh, capital, ka bo Floridir?
Kudamlas, speaker, kura, mm, soal, il, simple, ri, ma, kura, simplify, ri, ma, adra blu, am, understand. Ela, guli, bata, kamo, kura, ngusua, ra, teal, ngasen, kume, se, teal, teal, para, fr, mm, soal, ra, teang. Em, bulgula, se, terigel, msoha, less, in camera, twenty thousand, ma, ar, adult, kira, blae, ngari ora, elon, mil, te la. Terigel, teegidak, qualify. Mm, sel, kudado, sa, teal, twenty thousand, ma, six thousand, ra, karo, sir, kala, la, kura, mo, le, te, wa, se, el, terigel, msoha, six thousand. Twenty thousand, less, twenty thousand, ma, terigel, la, mea, art, terigal, tenan, tamit, terigal, resident, teal, blae, less than six, eh, teri, mo, qualify. Mm, kudad, tral, wa, 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 kura, soal, ri, mo, simple, ma, adra, lo, re, se, le, gida, soal, du, du, se, ra, adra. Mm, sel, do, sa, ri, mo, gmantel, oridir, teegidil, wa, i, lo, go, marino, lo, se, mal, mo, oridir, ra, teang. Eh, kudam, ngal, gan, fus, ra, blu, terigel, qualify, teal, subsidy, eh, do, si, si, brin, terigel, less than twenty thousand, ma, adra, kira, bliri, la, song, sir, six thousand, earnings, sir ti. Seegidak, guk, kura, mi, wirt, teang, ndeja, gung, lo, se, kudam, soal, teal, karo, sir, six, mm, ma, ra, qualify, a, six, ya, guk, over, a, a, twenty thousand, a, mo, disqualify, ma, ra, blu. Ar, gung, imol, kala, twenty, ma, less, six thousand, teri, qualify, household, teal. O, isi, mm, seegidil, any, over, a, i, kala, six thousand, ma, twenty thousand, a, disqualify, mm, simple, statement.
Seegidam, al, bata, kala, beto, lo, so, de, lo, so, de, ri, a, Floridir. Aklo, tutel el, eh, speaker, thome, singi, asela, teal, kamiti report, ma, adra, bela, amo, mta, ngli, ra, lo, se. Teal, lu, ngas, kli, teal, tesol, from, do, tin, or, twelve thousand, el mora, twenty. Base, seegid, numbers, lo, so, deleget, otob, mesel, while, annual, in camera, six thousand, eh, ba, or, less. Mla, si, si, btre, butokol, adra, mosabili benefit, teal, lifeline subsidy. Mangariya, gil, monthly, allotment, eh, tiram, omlay, plus, teal, guk, additional, eh, afpak, la, ngariya, subsidy, il, diregal, girel. Afogu, se, teal, troya, subsidy, among, se, terigel, adra, eh, tiram, ra, lospe, anges. Awul, magda, ed, ringi, asela, teal, report, kwa se. Anybody, ngi, miss, we, present, eh, gil, financial, report, ringi, amos, eh, motuta, kala, girel. Ndia, la, so, da, adra, ndia, la, ngi, agiril, benefit, teang, il, lo, mulak, information, ringi. Eh, bo, lo, las, teal, ludog, du, ra, girel, target, ra, adra, ma, bo, ul. Eh, team, al, bata, kala, lo, so, de, twenty thousand, annual, ah, ah, sel, while, ceiling, ra, a, household. Six thousand, annual earnings, or less, qualify. Mla, mo, mba, ringi, ndia, kudado, kudado, sa, da, guk, deka, obom, eight thousand, ndia, kamp qualify. So, eh, seegidil, lo, so, da, Flor, amal, bata, kala, lo, so, de, teang, abay, girel, du, lo, pi, teang, lo, se. Lo, la, la, i, kala, subsidy, ndia, la, subsidy, for debate, gida, am, so, da, i, kala, girel, adra, bela. Le, gida, mba, dingi, lo, se, a, da, mingi, de, teang, le, girel, du, pi, ma, mba, la. Mlen, kudam, dingi, lo, se, guk, tor, bo, mi, wud, eh, teal, troya, subsidy, teegel, ra, lospe, anges, amra, mo, gu, girel, teang. Do, ni, ta, ma, hoping, mle, clarify, gil, guk, isura, eh, tirau, ngel, girel, sel, ceiling, ra, twenty thousand, a, per household. Ma guk, six thousand, annual, earnings, anything, over that, ndeja, kadi, kamp qualify, de, girel, teang.
Sula, speaker. Sula. Ka bo e, oh, hal, el bo, delegetra, imri, ge, oh?
Sula, ra, teal, eh, speaker, ringi, du, ta, ul, merga, ma, ar, be kla. Eh, akta, dingut, teal, teal, eh, muk, du, le. Ah, soha, al, commander, Chairman, ma, vehicle, members, teal, conference, committee. Eh, the take note, or, sel, House Miscellaneous Committee, uh, com, Miscellaneous Communication Number Ninety Seven. Eh, tirau, du, la, last, eh, session, girel, ra, where, a, lo, mulak, country. Bavielle Gorgaue, Mister Speaker, mla, ra, a legal counsel officer, gith. Diregal, mal, appreciate, kwa se, ta, ngilo, at, teal, madu, badesai, gero, gwi. Line by line, eh, points of discussion. Eh, relevant, el mora, country discussions, on the S P three amendments, ra, Senate. Magta, kla, eh, seegidil, eh, guidelines, points of discussions, relevant. Mm, lo, so, el, ah, discussions, ra, conference, eh, diol, tirat, kla, eh, se. Eh, sera, bo, wal, mreks, eh, got, sils, ra, al, da, du. Eh, wa, blal, ogi, di, a, a conclusion, or, teal, conference, uh, committee report, to practically, di, imo, amde. Mm, mesi, el, maguma, la, al, da, du, ul, mo, emi. Acti, appreciate that the process allows, ra, adra, legal counsel, eh, ul, ul, ngli, a, aurella, House of Delegates, eh, teegidil, conference, uh, committee meeting, and discussions. Mm, mle, so, el, di, tal, sils, really, may, gil, guk, da, le, la, aurella, kamitil, dim, le, Chairman, took, uh, initiative, lo, ge, ge. Mm, so, ed, el, el, mre, ed, timely, pass, teal, Palau Energy Administration Bill. Otter, gakli, mora Ministry of Finance, may, gil, mlo, da, le, lo, gi, teegidil, S T three amendment. Ah, sel, ludog, komati, ak, la, ngara, sel, cross act. Ma lifeline subsidy, eh, la, ti, tro, la, plu, la, adro, ghi. Lo, lo, song, sa, dea, kala, ludog, ra, government, more importantly, ing, lo, lo, song, sa, ludog, ra, bu, katingi, ra, ra. Eh, a commander, Kamiti, Rogir, ma, aurella, House of Delegates, el, lo, so, bril, or, di, teal, country. Eh, teegidil, tro, era, a Palau Energy Administration, and mora Finance, amre, ed, mu, la, lo, bengela, i, kage, il, ngesu, el mora, adra, blu. Uh, in difficult times, sel, zal, mal, uspe. Sa, ra, teal, speaker.
Sula, ka bo e, delegetra, irai?
Ang, ma lungil, ma, swelbe, speaker, merga, ma, vice speaker, ma Floridir, ma be kla. Speaker, um, ah, kotul, ulak, ma, lungut, teal, lem, re, ngasulela, Chairman, ma, members, ra, conference. Eh, seegidil, effort, ter, ter, ma, aurell, il, way, aplo, lo, tal, ku, makri, teal, el, das, mu, la, teal, House Bill, uh, number eleven fifty, thus, five S. Eh, kondas, uh, am, ro, sel, kot, kur, ba, blu, lungil, du, sol, mora, be kla. Tokuni, seegidil, wa, ngara, report, teegidam, ngara, Kamiti, report, ra, el, ang, lo, ngora, ma, wa, bata, kala, kwa se, to, butokol, adam, mo, benefit, ma, lo, be, ta, most, eh, in, most, eh, in, mla, ngesu, ra, i, kage, il, ngi, a, ngari, il, te, al, ra, a, P P U C. Speaker, mm, di, i, kala, discussion, al, hur, ring, sa, am, la, ulak, eh, speaker, kura, mo, confused, mm. If I may, eh, Chairman, eh, kame, ri, du, tal, mal, clarifying, il, la, obong, ngah, al, tong, ok, teang, la, obong, kemiwe. Eh, kura, diregal, de, kalsal, mo, clarifier, ul, du, sweki, eh, gina, mal, uspe, eh, teang, la, most, eh, the, simplify, ringi, way, ke, lam, tu. Mm, bul, so, ira, adra, blu, tir, ah, teang, la, na, mo, ri, ngi, ringi, lo, se, ah, ki, ngara, house, ma, congres, ah, osi, kar, ul, la, la, most, eh, ngari, ngesu, el, mora, at, teal, ngi, a, subsidy. Mm, most, eh, ira, adra, sel, ba, akra, tro, era, ah, den, ki, ma, ro, gwi, il, ngesu, ra, kirela, tro, ra, ar, la, den, ki, ma, mla, masa. Eh, mm, seegidil, seegidil, wa, sentence, ah, kura, mo, confused, ser, ngi, Chairman, Mahame, especially Chairman, Awe, Senmin, sama Chairman, ra, a, P, a, teegidil, tro, ra, P P U C. Sel, sel, ku, ngui, wirt, teang, ah, hur, ring, sa, al, da, mu, kura, mo, clear, ndi, sel, ku, mesi, teal, sentence. Eh, ngway, al, kura, mo, mskaka, question, lo, se. Eh, la, seegidil, household, terigel, mo, Elizabeth, terigel, mo, si, il, mo, mla, teang, ngesu. Sel, imol, household, alsu, ma, in, camera, ngi, dea, bo, butokor, a, lu, il, te la, la. Eng di, imol, resident, la, al, sel, teal, eh, household. Ah, dea, kirel, ah, di, kirel, dea, bo, lo, su, ra, ngar, elon, mil, te la, la, ra, tarra. Ma, question, lo, se, alsu, gum, sel, household, da, in, camera, ngi, a, virka, ngari ora, lu, il, te la, la. Eng di, tartir, terigal, ngar, teal, household, da, ngari, am, su, a, er, te la, la. Em, bulgula, kwa se, teal, rugil, household, da, di, gyal, si, bel, kame, di, ensi, ringi, simple, lo, se, oi, ndeja, mbo, bata, kala. Le, elsu, gum, sel, household, da, am, su, ra, ngari ora, lu, il, te la, la, eh, te, Elizabeth, eng di, imort, tir, am, su, ra, er, te la, la. Seegidil, sentence, lo, se, imora, resident, ndeja, a, resident, ra, al, sel, sel, household, el, omega, ra, six thousand, ra, tarra. Alsu, ma, tartir, a, omega, ra, eight thousand, eng di, teal, household, da, less, ra, twenty thousand. Eng, ke, imort, tir, am, su, ra, er, te la, la, ngro, li, teal, household, di, gyal, qualify, al, di, gyal, Elizabeth, and, Mursel, ngesu. Kam, kura, ensi, ringi, simple, simple, ma, podo, dingi, lo, se, ngway, se, ma, lo, be, ndeja, am, sula, eh, eh, members, ra, country, ak, ma, mre, ngasule, ra, ma, mre, ul, blam, kat, makli.
Delegetra, blu. Sula, teal, speaker, diregal, member, ra, Kamiti, eh, di, teal, diregal, tarable, tarable, question, eh, eh, speaker, ma, malas, mm. Mor, i, gil, buk, lo, kura, ngilai, eh, respond, ma, closer, ispe, ma, ulak, lo, du, bo. Speaker, teang, ah, ah, mo, ah, subsidy, il, to, da, two hundred thousand, eh, other, other, rising, appropriate. El mor, teegidil, most, eh, vulnerable, eh, ah, eh, oke, a, P U C. Eh, uspe, ra, den, gi, a, hundred, hundred fifty kilowatt, se, a, maximum, mil, ti. Ma, terigel, a, u, ka, ah, ral, ma, five thousand gallons. Teang, at, pal, di, mort, terigel, gide, lo, uspe, a, den, gi, ngar, five thousand gallons, ral, ma, den, gi, hundred fifty kilowatt, el, merio. Ndeja, al, mort, terigel, la, ngalakra. Ah, we, ah, we, amle, question, ah, was, em, ngaram, mm, la, ri, ou, la, ri, ora, six thousand, ma, twenty thousand. Eh, dungul, mo, baba, le, bo, mo, sa, Elizabeth. Ma, minis, ah, a Chairman, ah, Chairman, Awe, Senmin, sa, ne, asena, tamlo, explain, kwa se, i, kala, figures, agi, ngi, la, finance, ra, teegel, applicant. Adra, li, mo, i, teegidil, la, hale, ba, kada, di, ti, ngar, bal, bo, wa, i, kage, il, nampe. Ngari, teegel, adra, dim, le, dea, k qualify, ndi, uspe, ra, den, gi, a, ma, ral, ma, ngari, i, kage, il, merio. Eh, mo, dea, k qualify, teang, ngwa, le, la, ri, i, gil, level, la, in, camera, ti. Sel, la, Floridir, Chairman, la, mla, ngara, thirteen thousand, ma, al, ang, al, mut, la, di, ang, di, six thousand, mut, ngari ora, six thousand, oh, ngar, four thousand. Eng, was, engway, al, ngai, teegidil, adra, uspe, a, den, gi, ma, ral, mil, di, a, den, gi, a, di, uspe, ra, a, hundred fifty kilowatt, ma, five thousand gallons, ral, mil, merio. Ding, mo, dea, kasi, eh, qualify, tel, mobile, teang. Ma, ding, ku, ser, ngi, eh, let's say, uh, teegel, applicant, sab, le, base, ra, i, gil, application, eh, ti, ma, so, sa, in, camera, ti. Em, lo, mba, dingi, lo, se, ok, mm, a, tre, sold, amo, twenty thousand, ra, hole, uh, teal, hole, household. Eh, to, mo, quali, mm, si, il, qualify, de, uspe, ra, den, gi, ma, ral, ma, kla, be. Ma, ah, sel, six thousand, ah, normally, eh, tingi, lu, me, divide, ri, ra, gwi, il, member, was, a, six thousand, ah, dungul, ma, six thousand, eh, ngw, ro, lo, bengela, twenty thousand. Um, okay, oh, ah, ah, more, ah, more, seegidil, ela, teal, algo, sel, calculator, ngi, a, mini, uh, finance. Eh, dungu, teal, rugil, household, du, me, including, eh, tir, under, employed, ma, unemployed. Eh, mba, bata, calculator, il, da, in, camera, teegidil, rugil, household. Oh, mm, ndi, tum, lo, ti, lo, se, al, ngara, six thousand, eh, terigel, gide, lo, uspe, a, den, gi, ma, ral, mil, ngari, gide, ratio, amo, qualify. Eh, te la, gide, we, commendation, of finances, speaker, eh, let, uh, mle, if, i, gil, rugil, application, ra, adra, lo, em, lo, be, lo, se, te la, gide, il, gu, way, al, qualify, ra, teal, two hundred thousand, subsidy. Di, ul, mo, dea, k qualify, in, camera, ti, ra, clo. Oh, mm, lo, way, al, ngwa, ela, let's say, example, as, ok, mo, ta, five, la, adra, ngara, household. Eh, mba, di, wa, na, tir, a, ore, or, eh, ta, divide, sel, ludog, du, la, ngel, wa, na, adra, te, i, mil, ad. Mm, mo, mo, mobi, ora, six thousand, ma, mobi, ora, twenty thousand. Seegid, ya, guk, skin, lo, le, lo, du, be, ngi, a, finance, lo, se, ok, mo, i, teegidil, oh, ok, mo, i, teegidil, at, te, te, la, den, gi, ma, ral, mil, la, ra, da, uspe, i, gil, hundred fifty kilo, kilowatt, el, merio. Ma, uh, seegidil, to, five thousand, ral, mil, merio, and, so, the, qualify, ti, di, ma, ngari ora, tre, sold, du, mo, dea, qualify. Seegidil, speaker, alsu, mu, ngani, kura, i, falau, abe, al, ngari, si, we, kala, ngera, mobile, so.
Sula, falau abe, vigi?
Speaker, ak falau, abe, ling, ki, ngam, pal, malas, ma, lo, se, ngm, harangi, to, butokol, adra, wa, sel, intent, ra, a, House of Delegates, ma, baka, Kamiti, lo, se, ngm, harangi, butokol, ada, Elizabeth, el, Mursel, troi, tokuni, household. Since, kudam, am, ru, ra, penalty, eh, ba, ado, mi, ter, salary, ring, kala, imol, adra, mort, tir, kala, be, bi, la, dea, kala, unemployed. Ki, ndeja, kala, bo, tu, ak, la, ling, al, i, kala, am, so, da, salary, il, based, a, fact. Eh, ma, ngari, a, penalty, ringi, ma, alsu, gum, kudam, a, a, omulak, lo, se, ngal, ada, im, unemployed, am, su, ra, te la, la, well, kura, ma, ren, ser, ngi, ma, kura, tu, ak, te, le, ta, la, la. Eh, kudam, so, da, kudam, ma, ngari, a, penalty, ma, adra, eh, kudam, am, al, sa, ra, adra, ngi, dea, kala, mora, salary, ringi. Seegidar, ra, rung, kuri, ma, kura, coming, ak, kore, members, ra, Kamiti, ak, kura, o, ke, lo, se, ki, ndeja, kala, bo, tu, ak, la, wa, te, te, le, ta, la, la, le. Kudam, am, ru, ra, salary, ra, adra, dea, kala, ngi, am, ra, salary, ra, ad. Eh, kudam, ang, teal, ludog, du, me, omi, ringi, terigal, members, ra, household, eh, eh, ak, ak, la, bu, sa, sel, penalty, dea, kala, omulak, am, bo, the, penalize, ra, a, adra, ngi, dea, kala, mora, salary, ringi, ma, lo, be, in, camera, ngi. Coming, seegidak, kura, ak, arig.
Sula, ak falau abe, eh, delegetra, na, pa.
Dea, kung, mal, ta, la, mal, so, la, madam, kanai. Akut, a information, do, sa, out, to, ra, table, mil, ngai, a Minister of Finance. A Minister of Finance, in the last, eh, three quarter, a monitor, teegidil, household, ma subsidy, lifeline program. Okay, mm, ki, da, deka, do, lib, a, salary, ra, ad. Ado, so, de, ri, a, am, de, increase, ra, threshold, ma, to, mo, more, la, ad, a, eligible. Ngara, ndia, klo, ludog, du, mora, be, kla, ndi, kada, di, do, mo, ot, te, te, a, do, ro, si, ringi, kudog, du, se, ti, ke, ma, ta, ar, busiri, ti, ke, ma, ta, ar, busiri. O, ngirung, eh, a penalty, ro, ul, tro, ul, eh, doru, la, zoom, bu, kit, la, la, eh, ngari, a, ben, sel. Pal, su, gum, kau, uspe, anges, enti, ndeja, kala, mo, ai, sa, kla, mra, a, ben, sel, amo, dea, kala, eligible. Eh, alsu, gum, mil, wi, eh, eh, mo, angesu, eng, ki, dem, kai, kaya, sa, although, du, du, kitar, ul, in, ber, ber, kau. Seegid, a, um, ra, kpa, sing, bata, kala, lo, so, de, teang. Ki, da, deka, do, wi, ma, te, kada, do, lib. I, kala, information, provided, to us, from Minister of Finance. Eh, monitor, ngi, o, gi, sel, le, le, la, senator, in, abo, e, gida, ma, kapi, ngi, la, February third, twenty twenty two. Le, girel, information, ra, lifeline subsidy program improvements, teegid, teal, doru, ngi, la, al, chills. Sula, teal, speaker.
Eh, Chairman?
Sel, penalty, so, de, ni, or, the, penalize, ra, ad.
Sel, penalty, so, de, ni, or, the, penalize, ra, ad, eh, ng, o, wim, mokluk, ma, lo, bant, al, te. Akut, speaker, se, sel, ludas, ah, mo, teegel, tir, dea, kala, girel, benefit, teal, program, eh, force, information, eh, to make them eligible. Se, a, ndia, kudam, ro, ra, ad, kwa, sel, zoom, guk, teal, girel, mila, teal, ludog, du, in, camera, gomiwa, a sufficient, eh, dea, kofol, under, teegidil, criteria. Ela, kaba, msi, si, me, omulak, ndi, kudam, si, si, o, ai, se, ti, lo, se, teal, zoom, ma, adra, finance, am, lam, ti, gri, gumi. Eh, kmo, kumulu, mulak, eh, mila, i, kala, subsidy, il, girel, a, tro, den, gi, ma, eh, ki, de, el, mlsia, ha. Anybody, ngi, a, cheat, he's or her way into the system, mm, el, mom, ala, eh, angesu, il, girel, ma, or, eding, al, o, girel, du, la, tu, il, giri, terigel, ra, lospe, angesu, a, girel, du, mlsi. Mse, se, om, ak, ta, kara, ad, lo, se, oi, abne, part, ra, country, kudag, il, ngi, lo, se, lo, lo, mol, mseegidil, language, ma, al, se, la, la. For anybody, ngi, a, trial, disease, ra, system, to gain, for personal gain, eh, ngi, a, mm, le, provide, the information, eh, ngi, a. To make him or her eligible, but, ndga, dea, kala, girel, eligible, mo, obal, sel, girel, ngari, a, ben, sel, girel, se. Se, tral, mo, ro, ra, ad, mla, kaba, mo, teal, program, am, mo, teegel, ra, lospe, angesu. Eh, kada, do, ngai, ngari, a, teegel, guk, teal, girel, eligible, eh, milas, mm, most, o, is, braj. So, de, li, la, report, ma, la, mba, bata, kala, kwa se, teal, milu, tu, il, giri, terigel, gide, il, tir, uspe, angesu, uspe, ra, zero, two hundred fifty, or, five thousand gallons, per month, teal, subsidy, am, lo, se, terigel, gide. Kua, alsu, gum, ngara, lu, il, te la, la, sel, household, da, ngara, lu, il, te la, la, or, in, camera, household, da, ngara, sel, lu, il, te la, la, or, ngara, six thousand, uh, annual, ya, kha, eligible. Anybody, abad, ka, dea, kala, eligible. Seegid, eh, speaker, acti, soha, di, mba, ta, kli, mora, la, la, lo, se. Sel, mle, intent, teal, ul, mba, ngi, la, la, lo, se. For anybody, trial, disease, but, teal, program, girel, mo, ngi, a, ben, sel. Ndia, molas, mm, moro, au, du, di, ra, ad, tir, ra, lospe, angesu. Seegid, eh, speaker.
Ka, falau, ah, ah, ka bo e, oh, eh, delegetra, sansorun?
Speaker, eh, se, kwa, di, kwa, di, soha, kwa, di, attribute, ra, teal, discussion, eh. Speaker, da, ma, nga, ma, mle, o, si, si, wa, kant, sen, nga, kondas, eh, gide, ro, gwi, ma, mle, o, si, si, wa, kwa, kant, sen, eh, gide, seegidil, language, lo, se, twenty thousand, eh, me, ngari, ngel, one, and, six thousand, eh, mo, da, kala, eligible, teal, household. Eh, saegi, bo, mo, meeting, ma, senator, se, ta, mal, no, clarifying, eh, way, gil, blal, lo, go, teal, be, be, kudam, dim, le, raise, ra, threshold. Ndii, sel, twenty thousand, eh, se, a, a, max, am, la, la, karsay, eh, dea, kala, eligible. Ma, sel, six thousand, oh, oi, ma, sel, six thousand, alsu, gum, kuda, te, wa, la, ad, la, al, sel, teal, blai. Eh, kuda, kuda, kudam, soha, ngar, six thousand, eh, it, eh, ad, di, alsu, gum, kuda, for, la, ad, la, campaign, i, kala, salary, gide, ra, annual, eh, la, la, ngalak, sel, twenty thousand, namo, da, kuda, eligible. Di, alsu, gum, kuda, ngar, sel, less than, sel, twenty, eh, still, kuda, eligible, sel, tri, di, te, de, la, ad, la, sel, household, eh, it, a, am, su, a, the, six thousand, eh, te, eligible, teal, di, eighteen thousand, annual. Mm, kura, di, soha, kwa, mut, lo, kwa, di, clear, ngi, mo, bata, kala, ndi, kala, bo, la, divide, the, salary, ra, one, la, ad, ndeja. Mm, da, so, a, sel, bo, campaign, a, salary, ra, ad, eh, mo, to, be, sel, eligibility, ra, alsu, mum, la, la, ta, twenty, namo, dea. Eh, alsu, mum, below, eh, campaign, a, rugul, salary, em, below, ra, twenty, eh, ngi, eligible. Mm, da, sa, se, ngi, a, clear, lo, om, so, de. Eh, sel, speaker, eh, sel, ro, so, de, ri, al, al, blaringe, teal, ludas, mu, la, al, blaringe, ma, lo, bant, dim, la, kand, di, ngi, a, ta, ang, ra, tum, li. Eh, of course, la, la, ang, ri, am, tum, li, am, omulak, information, kuda, di, ma, tum, la, mo, ta, ta, la, mm. Se, al, ngaringe, team, al, dim, la, al, dim, la, kada, o, sir, bingi, ngi, a, ndeja, katal, male, let, speaker, sula.
Sula. Eh, oh, deleget, you want? Sula, speaker, mba, mle, sir, baka, ka, ma, vice speaker, ma, Floridir, ma, vitt, deleget. Ndii, soha, mo, oh, mre, ngasulela, Chairman, ma, 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 lungi, report. Ndii, kwa, soha, mut, mo, highlight, eh, gil, wa, ul, eh, mal, kura, gide, do, du, teal, bill, mm, mga, i. Sel, dom, se, teal, bill, en, kua, angesu, seegidil, do, do, giri, lo, se, lifeline, subsidy, mo, teegidil, ngara, twenty thousand, a, in, camera, ti, mil, you, ngara, imol, household. Ma, direkt, se, guk, subsidy, mo, teegel, ma, resident, se, teegel, ngar, under, a, five hundred, eh, kilowatt. Eh, awa, guk, bo, wa, fifty, la, la. Se, a, dea, kala, bo, ra, mora, ngi, di, la, ah, pa, su, gum, kua, ngar, sel, in, camera, a, sel, five, ma, lo, be, twenty, eh, girel, eligible, se. Eh, al, mut, ta, ma, ul, ba, te, du, ngi, sel, hundred, sel, one million, ra, cross, act, direkt, wa, bo, lo, se, gil, private sector, real, liberty, teal, ra, sel, go, fit. Seegidak, tra, ulak, ludog, teal, bill. Eh, acti, kura, ma, la.
Delega al momolo da FY 2022 budget, delega ma appropriate, though the more relief measures under across act. Ma we be ramotlom sodel. Deable introducing ya speakers, Sabino Anastasio by request.
Sekida taitol na bui. Flor leader agu bede ngara eru si gangan da de veit da tial gamitiri porto. Undas se cel discussiona gamitiri portam nasmo di abid. Unless of course, ngkada ngara formalite, eh delegat Culibert, ngari agrira ab, kiala ge eh me mkanembe da por ni aurorol kool. Ada ge alaga question, clear gamu aurorol kool.
Delegat Arura.
Oi.
Delegat Kibons Junior.
Oi.
Delegat Culibert. Flor leader Kanai.
Oi.
Delegat Kamson. Delegat Marino.
Yes.
By speaker, Nira Iwe. Delegat Niata Ka Kanai.
Oi.
Delegat Onidobala.
Oi.
Delegat Otobado.
Oi.
Delegat Lulka. Delegat Sinzak.
Oi.
Delegat Swalabla.
Oi.
Delegat Telay.
Oi.
Delegat Umetaro.
Oi.
Speaker Anastasio.
Oi.
Mister Speaker, Asen Kyul Mora Housebill number eleven dash fifty dash five S, H D one, S D three, C D one, a fourteen yes, edekano.
Sekida kekara Sen Kyu. Tiam am lamai il C D one, tia gidil housebill number eleven dash fifty, dash five S, H D one, S D three, C D one. Tiam am lamai ra adur den final reading. Flor leader.
By speaker, ngademo se item thirteen, Ra Bi. Ma mega motion, adapt ra House Joint Resolution number eleven dash twenty-two dash six S.
Sekida, a motion number la tial House Joint Resolution, ngara adoption, em lasegende, clear gamu iwe taitol.
House Joint Resolution number eleven dash twenty-two dash six S. Tial House Joint Resolution, a move is to a title, our honorary citizen of Republic of Palau, upon Mrs. Melissa De Paiva Gibson. In recognition of her life, her love, and her forgiveness. Deable introducing ya speakers, Sabino Anastasio.
Sekida taitor ra tial lamui ve. Tiam amal klire delegatengayurum. Ngel redila mo dengni tial story ringi ma, family ringi ra, al ngari ager ne hapningin mortirra several years ago. Eh ngar tiaman ta mo sior se il huyrum mal uving film ringi ra gabsakai. Bor ngi talvekladu, bor sebe ete de boraha. Ajiim edesa se gidil. Nganga, a gel. Ne hapen ma family ringia okbo taraha de emla di marai de galu utu me. Otiya, or the swell. Maru ulua se il nomta arbasula ga family ri ngak, de nga ga di maru maru belau. Sekida oti luasea, ngar redila. Seeltama la hapen ten years old. It's a trauma rik. Hmm, cool. Preu da mori, ital ma dadmal ma dalale, di galke galitugoi. Di. Aulakne, introduce tial resolution, unkoan ngari auldas, se tia galibail. Lu ngil dreldi, ngar tianima, tiga la de mo siort se il. Il film ringi, huyrum ringi ra gabsakai ra. Ajiim, tiga la de bor sebe ede de bom. Eh dige agirak towe, sebu ngari a, ngari aukka, kamen teri. Tia. Motion. Kabonge delegat ra irai.
Speaker, me kun tirahaldi one minute recess.
Short recess. Tial kademe rissese florider, elaga da mutu melmo, me kame mutu ma ulaula le mega, a similar motion edo udo saudara.
So move speaker. Eh adapte se il House Joint Resolution number eleven dash twenty-two dash six S.
Sekida motion em lasegende. El mo adapt, tia gidil Joint Resolution, di for the record, de a delegat ra blur ra irai. Amlo ko sign, ko sponsor tial resolution. Ngabengi amo ko sa, mo sign ngi. Eh bo se edu mu elang, emlo ko sendi ki mu la senate. Ada senate, ta mo mitra tu oklaq, ngari a time, bor sebe lo mesu, ele pasu. Tiam am lamuiwa taitole, clear ke? Oi, kadama la discussion, wea bodo Sen Kyu. Delegat ra angrelu, speaker, akti momlede. Ngaka olu botea resolution, dige domal ukngake. Seledo ulu tial resolution, kadama ulua bodo, swa seeltama la gal redil. Al suum letrui argile, emno sois, bravati al goriol, al se la blur belau. Eh think, for her to return, el meri blur belaua. Emra se edu mesal, wa se ngal au ngi se rengi, ringi ra toora klo kristiano. Mla decide lo subes, and this is part of the healing process. Ringa a, a gidil mutu mer belau, emsa ma, a blur belau. Eh wa ngalgal, argile mosois, wa seltama la mal, adu madengel wa se. Na ngari a gel guks, mental scars, ringa a beklasil, sen atra il deal with, se la klangari. But for her to return, agen se la wa se, she's really brave, el mutu mer belau. Ringa amle madengel wa se, tia isil milket moq, a gel. Ngidil ngalgal mosois, wa se lomru la, amde ngel wa se, mutroko, kalkmal mombringi ra klangare ti. Ndii nga ka malu du botea omral wa se. List at weekend do, akutmakle wa tia gidil resolution, emsasa gidil kuqora. Honorary citizen of blur belau, malora, elela klo bes, wa se kadade diregal, al belau amelatker ngi. El gidil a gel, whatever suffering see went through. A gidil okua, amelatker ngi, kuqo gi tial babi, eh kado oti a udo smedel wa se. Kama mal, malatker koe, diregamlu uetel obengel direk. Sula speaker. Sula, amalungil, eh kamen de delegat ra angrelu, kaboe be delegat ra irai, flor leader.
Misauli speaker, at teale, eng bana du a delegat ra angrelu, eh ru lahla poktu se se, nomta arbasul. Men biaksan mal mo melgo ditel, lah mal di. Eh momarenga solem speaker, eh men introduceer tial resolution. Eh ma aruli tial tugoi, ringa mal klow tugoi. Eh mo kirin arbetla adra blur belau, tugoni blur ra irai. Ma ma di momteer ar adra irai ma, eh mal momarenga solem. Eh se delegat ra irai, ak momteer ti rogu, eh mal momarenga solem, emilde swa tian mal klow tanakla. Eh klow tele tail, el bol mketmoq, morongan ngalga. Eng mal mo, ol mal mo realize se gidil wayan, ab al forgiveness, mal uving ma. Ah usubes, a gel tian mal klow ringel, emlor ngi, klow barao, ringi amlor ngimo. Ak mal di, eh se tial teale, oh ngi tringil teale, momarenga solem. No men introduceer, eh go ngai ma koba ngemel. Introduceer ngi, emsa tia gidil, waya bol tanakla, el musa be la honorary citizen of blur belau. Ringa amal ma go ngai ra, aklanga ringi, ma tiril, ma forgiveness, ser ngi kirela blur belau. Sula speaker.
Sula, delegat ra irai, kabonge flor leader.
Speaker, akroadi ol ngitu, ma da tri teringil technical, emro goi de bor sebe, include ra irai. State governor, at me wang rulba, eh ta mo sipi ensert tial resolution, unkoadi. Assertify, at transmitert tial gapir, resolution, unkoadi amora, a blur ra irai.
I see. Clear, some note se bom yangi, tia de technical. Kida. Kida amredil vekladu, wa se ngal. Ngal ngalgal mosois brari, el ra blur belau. El di gal ta adu belau, adu el belaua, wayal tillemise, tillemiseltama la. Eh ngi ma da, ra adu bril, ma ngara ga melmo, emesu belau. Eh se oti udu swir, ma forgiveness, emura ra adu belau ma blu. Eh direga, melmo, mesual mer belau. Nganga bekmit ringi ra, na two days ago. Ra obisa president, nga ma senate president, eh mita tiga gidil, ah ngari a angor ngi, tiga bebinar adu. Eh ta mo sior, a film ra gabsakai. Al suum kademo, eh clear gamu ndasseka, om, muda du, ada senate, bor se il pasu ngi elang. Ma. Agundasen amo Friday, sarude mo se edel delebe ringi mori. Eh ma, uli tia ga delegat ra irai, mka damutma almoi. Maria multe kamen kabonge delegat ra matpan.
Speaker. Eh, omesera, resolution eh speaker eh, emsa ata toora, klaus subes. At tele tal miru, la ma. Miru, miru la, a gel tugoi, hutso na af. Al adu galu subes, el adu diregal di galu bes. Mang, aulma kmo muda du eh speaker ra. Eh ak malatkar, Claude Kingal, Miss De Paiva. Eh diregal, ak merur. Ak merur ra blur belau, lo pride isil, wa se mketel blu, la ngari a wayka gidil du, ringi. Aulma kwa, al mughe, ngal lo melo. Eh malu renga se ulku meng, dimla kaldu, let diregal, mketar no kora. A bluwa, demagip. Eh mutu man, mketar no kora nganbi tamal, lemre ra blu, a blur belau, et tial tele tal, la du, emori. Mang, se gidil speaker eh, adaka, adikpulwa se. Gidil, tira du bes, emetangali. Eh, amal, momarenga solela, Miss De Paiva, a klaus subes ser ngi. Eh diregal. Seildor rengsa, eh du mes, tial, se la fin mutu. Eh direga da keep in mind, el wa se, aigang atoora, ngaringa, ndilu, unfortunate lingilu, belau. Ndii, a belau melmo, mel, la asperel, tia adu belau, diregal, meri isiril. Emilera, ar mota aqula ma, ar mota arbasiril, ma mabuul, doelmo, emil seel belau, seel ba aqula. Eh, a gidil, the. The, doranga solela, Miss De Paiva, a klaus subes ser ngi. Eh, with an open mind, an open heart. Eh, resati al. Witness, witness tia gidil experience, ra, Miss De Paiva, ma, a klaus subes ser ngi, ma blur belau. Ma blur belau, lolmo, lu ngil blu eh speaker eh, eh harbor, amal, ta arbasiril, ma mabuul. Eh, and diakata tolerate, ma luba da, support, wayka gidil tele tal. Toora da, ngaringa, ma luba, eh diregal, speelam ketel plalo, doel ya adu, mo tekalungil omdasku. Speaker, magi da kati swakalkunge, eh diregal obengame, will support, ra, ma lungil dasku. Eh mal momarenga saul, gidela forgiveness, se klaus subes, ngal, young lady. El meri, a blur belau, ma tele tal, el ngi amlo sois bral, al se. Pan saura tial speaker.
Sula, eh, ulaula dirko, per discussion. Al suum diage, me. Kademo kansi der tia, tiga go ngai. The pass tia, adapt tial resolution, do oi.
Oi.
Ontok. Tiam am lamai il fourteen yes, ede gano. Flor leader.
Oh speaker, magda, amalugia ulaid, magda morse, item sixteen, el Miss News Business.
Kadama la Miss News, suum oka, oka blackem, la Miss News, elaga moliba bes. Kabonge eh delegat Culibert.
Oi. Sula speaker at teale, tia diakalbeesa speaker tia. Ndii tablo, Miss News, eh speaker ma gota. Momarenga solea chairman va, eh, atro lu gamitil, unkoan, tia gidil tugora sabsidhi. Speaker, ndii, meri, se, se custom bereser ngi, a kanson, a delegat at obei ma irai. Flor leader speaker ra, seel miluwa twenty thousand, ma six thousand. Suum la swet chairman, amelmo, mori a custom ngi adu blu. Se, mo kora kan fusing. Ak kora. Aktiri lu lek, mle tial ngara kan friends, mba, mla swa, doelmo, go, oiba yubira. Issues, doelmo, tommilis speaker, le moru utun. Ndii, meri, alu, meri, lo se tia, amelmo, mori a custom ngi adu blu, se gidil twenty thousand, ma six thousand. Doel miser ngi speaker, la baise, el mori a kora. Eh, diakal klo, di, el mori a kora, missus, mba, abu sta, se speaker. Eh nasabu ela, a adu kira blain, moro ten, six thousand, evo du der. Eh mo kira tugoi, tugoi se, tia ngadi boyfriend, ndi me ngadi visitor. La swen ge gidil, mori a adu, mo isingi speaker, doel miser. Se la al, abad, salari, my income. Ndii, kira blain, di, tia ngadi visitor. Ngadi boyfriend, di gal friend, eh qualified. Speaker, ye, a ge gidil do mes speaker, passi ol, ma pen speaker, ndii. Ma, atas speaker, momarenga solem, emil mos, eh galon, eh gaor, seel, zoom, ngari ra, elis. Eh, nosu, eh ge, emil delegat, seon, eh gas speaker, emil seel. El do, il novin news, seel, eh moyu, obengela, siaval, miye prefecture. At twenty fifth anniversary gidra, tiasistera, siri ra siaval, ma blur belau. Tia sera, nineteen ninety-six, eh, late president. Nagamurae, delegat a biliwa, gitmakli, deluil. Ma ne tugubetsel deluil, tugubetsel deluil, la donel belau, ma miye prefecture. Kademengel wa se, seeltama, president nagamurae, mlong. Nineteen ninety-six, et mesai, insulagri men, sekilimoyu. Ledma la, president nagamura, al se blu. Speaker, ma di, a gemle, mna la zoom, obengir, ngi gidil kabenora, miye prefecture. Kabenor itsimi, clear. Nganga mlo, way, kuway, yakso, ne blur belau wa se. Momelmo, ma, yesu, ngara miye prefecture, mer belau. Tuguni a, mori a, akora exchange program. Tiga il, kuca, experta kora tugora. Eh, akaltiur, ma tugora sees, ma il, lo guli yesu, doel, el, el tam, kobe lies, a blu ra, miye prefecture. Amo kanti new. Eh tuguni, ngari sele, seel, se blai ber doni, tringil mom. Gan blai, eh lu se blai la bul. Se, se, nasu, a kanu offensive, ah, clear. Se gidil speaker, ospe aripen, ngadu bakwa se. Mo, mori a program, eh mo, mori a na blu belau, mom. Mori muse, tilri per seel, blai. Mos, ngari a training, la, tuasi train, la, tia ngara kasiaval. Agi bebinas, di bebinra, kora program speaker, mori, ndii, ngari amutu bebinra, yesu, eh, to leader, balo muski. Makti, so lo, esil, se se tugoi. Eh direkwa, eso se sele, ngari a, ah, direct. The aquarium, se blu, tova aquarium. Se direkwa, assista aquarium, tial pekrik, al blu belau. Direct ngari a, mo benefit, logia program, logia, tia gidil, blu, mo film, ringi. Doel momarenga solela, ngavenor itsimi. Ma blu a miel, mal, direga, continue, mo lulu, tia gidil, lo ngi speaker, blau ma, miye prefecture. Sula tial speaker, ngi gidil, kati mle, Miss News.
Sula eh, delegatengayur, kaboe matpan.
Bo subes eh, eh speaker, muda du a, atakal Culibert, eh nga alo ki tiam. Hmm, le race seel issue, a twenty thousand threshold, ma six thousand. Eh, nga kulebesel, smodi, tiga de la se sang, a, a gel calculation, a minister. Mleu tour, se household income, eh expenditure, apmul wa se, imol household, at teder, ar na, al se, on average. Misera calculate, emle calculate, lospeert, tiga gidil, teder af, ra imol, obli, household. Ma ulu meng, seel six thousand at nu, ngel one, ma two, ma three, al sum termur, tra six thousand. Et eighteen thousand, still under, a twenty thousand, still, te Elizabeth, teder af. Mang, a ulu meng, a, a gel o urel dosa, a, a, akmo singram, ndiakalbotoora, ateri, tangari a moro obloftak. Hmm, se lo olgai, maluving tele tal, ospeer, a minister, a se gidil household income expenditure survey. Ma ulu meng, seel twenty thousand, eh, amlo olgai, emil seel six thousand, speaker, ra. Eh, destama, destala, per person. Ah, oi, ulu tour, a survey information. I, I hope, aktirgal, may help to clarify, atoora, o ur, sula.
Kabonge delegat time break.
Sarra, tial eh speaker. Eh, diaal toora, sabsidhi, digo gi tial teale. Kademo ngel vekladu, wa se sera, March eleven, emla ringa. Special election, el filla vacancies left ra. A gel, kagarousu, ol bir, ra, mong la for, eh paiva blu. Eh, aimli ga, emle included, eh, imora vacancy, lamomrega, Sen Kyu. Aktio gi tial teale, mal commander, tiga il, mlor mort. Ra malbu, eh, la akal, Sen Kyu. Ibok tunklier, ngari a, Harrison, Nirairek, Swalabla. Lighter Dolmer, Siriano Salon Gailang. Malucio, Oisubogol, Obagarba. Eh di ka, bu gi tial teale, as well, eh speaker. Eh congratulate, ra ngel, mlong sisi. Lucio, Oisubogol, Obagarba. El vesel, mo dala, aimli state legislature. Ak kora lilitki, eh speaker. Le, as we all know, eh, Mister Obagarba, I'll retire, eh, one or two years ago. Eh, mleu retire, el staff ra olbir, agalulau. Eh, ourersel, joint staff, eh, mleu IT, once again. Ak, offer my warmest. Congratulations, el mora Lucio Obagarba. And wish him all the best. Raurel veseladala, aimli state legislature. Sarra tial.
Sula eh, delegat time li, kaboe delegat abili new.
Man saul eh, speaker eh, ndi seela, eru ulu, mo budu, eh de ulu, eh. President ta mo sapmitra budget, el meri gidil adu olbir, agalulau. Akpulwa se speaker, emgide de katmoq, eh, meri, budu uet. Eh, kademo ngel, wa se, ngal udo, ah, mosois, eh, emo, kutmoq, eh, ul muski. Mang ngel de katmoq, eh, seeltama, eh, emomeru tia. Ado mesra, audo da ra, capac, a gofa investment, el nga blur omregel. Emlo three hundred, doyuan million, ra, December twenty twenty one. Akmada ngel, wa se, ah, adu la budget tergid, kadama la tergib ringi. Ndii, akora, aldos, eh speaker, eh, wa de katmoq. Eh, kadosepa la time, abut, eh, inclusive, eh, kademo, mo de du, lon tri, adu, adu amregel. Eh, eh, do mes, tial, madad, meri alme, eh. Tia gidil, tia la, eh, ensois, ma, tugora, audo, badokmoq, la budget. Mlu, eh, do ma, klow du du, eh, eh, do lasa, mle, do mes, eh, tial physical, eh, meri alme, se next, physical, eh, meri. Hundred million, umal diu mil, eh, do mei. Eh, tial, mo adu du, tugora, gofa, na twenty twenty four. Mal askra, president, mal askra, tir, mo ribre, nisa, tial, tugora, audo, investment. Le, a gidil, a gel time, speaker. La, abod katmoq, la igan, el or almei. Eh, malo, si, galon, el momeru, ri. Eh, al, sa, malmo, tok, abel se. Eh, se credit, eligibility, tiga, mal momoling. Eh, eh, diakal du deh, speaker, eh, eh, do ta, lo banke, eh, do mei, a gidil, vesu du du, emla almei. Do mei, tia gidil, digital residence, seel, shisba audo. Ma understanding, eh, amlamu, ra, seven, seven, adu, nasois, mba, wa se, seven, seven, thousand. Aktikpulwa se speaker, eh, ka, mde, kme, mototan, ngatian. Eh, mde ngel, wa se, ngal audo, adu, adu, sois, eh, ngal audo, doel, a president ta mo sapmitel mei. Aktikpulwa se gidil, eh, palonit, wa se, do mes, tia gidil, tia gidil, ta la teale. Le ga du deh, eh, al time, ngilal, o spe. Mketal, al nga, al nga, al nga, ngi, mde. Eh gidil, da, a se tia ring, lobel tri, ra adu belau. At toora, chudishia, system, eh, wa se, punitive damage. Seel pen, suffering, gidamom, ngadu ngi, gidangal, seel, eh, mringi, la te teale, doelmo, mosetan. Tiwa se speaker, eh, mal saul.
Sula eh, eh delegat ra, abili new. Kadu, dirga kabodo saudara budget. Ndii, kadu asse, eh, doelmo, saudrigi, ra, di, meri de la time. Tiga le, komia, kademo ngel vekladu, wa se, eh, kademo ngel withhold, audo, gidil, state budget. Nga di gel, a budget ra state. Tiga le, ete sem time, eh, kadu, alabang, ringi, wa se, posa be la, angari, maluven, tia. Tiga il, efforts, gidil, passa vto, kulbil. Agi oti lu, wa se, ngari, aru da, increase a budget ra state, eh, gidomte. Direct, akmada ngar, ada senate, ta, la di, emsu, tial aircraft registry. Ndii, ngogiv tial, session, agulitra, kali gidil, ra senate president. Pe, ya senate, or se, se me, bru, larungiu. Eh, diakal, ngaral, metamal, la, da, passa tilang. Maluven, ngar, blu race, red flag, eh, motu, di, memdo saudari. Oh, mketal, di, red flag, ah, di, one la. Eh, uru ku di, tial, lu ngil plalo, or a blur belau. Sem time, eh, ngi, eh, de, mo, korgi, krapa, che tergid. Gida alabang, ra ringil, kadu si, a vesu du du, emetmu, tial blu. Momarenga sole, kadu, direct, marasil, eh, hiringa, a, atoora, marine sangsuri. Mlu, tiga la, aldudu. Ndii, soha, bol, ode, ngel vekladu, wa se, a state, a uklalo, adu bel belau. Et e sem time, al suum, ngari a udo du, mei, emal, blakatakl, gidil, olbir, mora state. Kademo ngel, eh, a udo de, aru langse, la mei, eh, ngari a gel, bingel, mora state. Dipendera, population, ma, aklungela, a blu. Agi gidil, tita nagmara, or the swell. Eh gidil, a gidil, de tmaq. Eh, uru, losi, a udo du, meri, a blu, la, a gal state tergid. Tiga gatal time, eh. La, gumte, eh, komi, do si, garu, le, a udo. Lamue ayrag, mu eti urrag, el di do, race a udo. Agundas, eh, meri, wa se, komia, obengek, eh, wa se, gidela, budget ra state, el masa. Se, tia, se, eh, meri. Ma, obengek, eh, kadu, meru ngi, o si, a vesu du du, el meri, state gid. Al suum, komo, mto, se, eh, laklu, mei, om sal, mo ofken, degamur, uetra, Sen Kyu. Kaboe delegat ra, tove.
Sula, tial eh speaker, eh, hot, mal di, keredo, sohal, di, keredo ngi, eh, du, ndi, au tiam, lamu du, emla mutu. Oh, pen, abto, la sim. Speaker, eh, milu duwa, eh, tanaklu, delegatengayur, eh, maldi li, amra lu ngil, tugoi. Mang, kwa, mal di, kme, ra, delegat ra, son sorol. Eh, se losaudra, amla ra, bul, ndiakas, tia ga bol, roidra, asongso. Mang, koradi, ngiru, mosegi, de, beri, al tam, tangari, al loreng, se mongu, seel, bola, bola, riper, amla ra bul, eh, tangari, al adu ra bul, mdu. Speaker, eh, kadema saudra. Audo, eh, where are the mosegi, eh, mil saudra, o. Our, our relationship, persegi, the prefecture, ma Pikrik. Ndii, me, by, tia, eh, ngatel, olbaula. Since, ra, boldora, Pikrik, Melmutrela, Palau International Corec Center, Melmutrela. Na, ngalakra, twenty years, alakaluit. Ndii, netal, kweisengi, ra board. Netal, kweisengi, ra, a chairman, ra board, ra Pikrik, former chairman. Eh, netal, kweisengi, tial ulaul. Me, krutel, race, ngi, re la, eh, gu ba, mal, ngari, or reng, eh, ol ngi. Mal, tangari, a, de, kupu, sa. Eh, le, tabe ngi, tial, aldudu. A belau, akol blu. Seel do mes, ngi, ngur ngayang, al, ngur, lotamir, eh, reng. Ndii, seel, de bora, Pikrik, a Pikrik, aman, na gageri, belau. Eh, ndi, ngur, mor, mur, ngayur. Sele map, ngamla, Pikrik, seel, klow map. Seel, metengar, tourist, et partra, mo, display, belau, et mosoni, seel, map. Seel, mal, clear, do mes, ngi, three D, map. Se, diakal, inset, ringi. Ma, ndi, ngur ngayang, ngayang, al, ngur, mes, to, ngayur. Se, ia, belau. Ngaram, na la Pikrik, el al time, dringar ngi. Nam, more than twenty years, se luisi. Nam, ote la, lingo, saudari ngi, nam, ote la, grace, ngi, eh, diakal, ora, ngi, tu, gidil. Mang, hope, foli, galu, ngun, motangir, a siaval, at tial prefecture, as well, gu, mosu. The prefecture, I'm sure, I'm sure. The, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad. It's a, a part, you know, history, I'm glad. But, but, as we speak. I'm sure, I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm sure, I'm sure. Because I'm sure, the other one, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man. 2002, the train, Piscor, I'm glad. It's a, a, Piscor, a, a, Bola Bay. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. And all the way, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. And look, I'm a man. Stick on that, I'm glad, Southwest Island. And all, I'm a man. I'm, 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 I'm a man. And at least, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad. So, that speaks value to me. But I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm glad, I'm glad. Speaking, I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. They get to me, earlier, we're at a session. So, I'm a man, I'm a man. The marine sanctuary, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm a man. Minister, of course, I'm glad, I'm glad. Part of it. It's a, 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 a minister, Victor. And I'm here, the whole team, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a. A benefits, a pen. Fund. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Yes. If you're not, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. It's a, a funding, a pen. It's an investment. And I'm a man, 500,000, I'm sure, the investment. Support, or a pen, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad. A pen, I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. The other one, I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, 500,000 shortfall. Because now, my investment. My connection challenge, I'm a man. And I'm a man, I'm glad. The shortfall, I'm glad, I'm a man. So, that's half a million. But I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man. Half a million, more like a state. And more, 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 more. And we all fall apart. There are the, 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 the. My program, I'm a man, I'm a man. The conserve, I'm a man, resources, it's a issue. I'm sure, we fall apart. But, but, we need to look forward. And then, then, they get to me, speak. Yes, we need to find some ways, my source, funding. But more, 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 more. More, more, budget. Because the other one, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. The other one, I'm glad, I'm glad. But I'm sure, I'm sure.
They get to me.
Soon, speaking. I, I'm glad, I'm glad. Tension, I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, the culture, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. So, I'm a man. And I'm a man, understand, I'm glad, I'm glad. My economy, I'm a man, I'm a man. And the, the, I'm a man, I'm a man, I'm a man. And the, I'm a man, I'm a man. And I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Mini English, I'm a man, I'm a man. Speaking, I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. And because I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. Human services. I'm glad, program, I'm a man, I'm a man. To call it, oh, oh, I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. I report, the, 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 the. On March 14, at 3:30 PM. And although, I'm glad, I'm glad, new cases, I'm a man, 23, I'm a man, 23. Hospitalization, hospitalization, the one. And there, there, I'm a man, six, I'm here, I'm a man. And I'm glad, active cases, I'm a man, I'm a man. 292. And I'm a man, recovering, I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. And I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. And the, I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad, for our new cases, I'm a man, I'm a man. 23, the S of Monday. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. To call it, I'm a man. But I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. And I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. Because I'm a man, I'm a man. Speaking, I'm a man, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man. Although, I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. But I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm a man, I'm a man. And I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. Ministry, a minister. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. A plan, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. But I'm a man, I'm a man. But I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. But I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. And I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. 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 With, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. It's off today, I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad, information, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, a red flag. Meaning, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. Because I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. Cases, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. But I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. Full support, I'm a man, ministry. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. And I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. Speaking, I'm a man, I'm a man.
Soon. Well, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad.
I'm sure, speaking, I'm a man, I'm a man. They get to me, yes. The other one, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. Program, I'm glad, I'm glad. Speaking, I'm a man, I'm a man. About, almost two weeks ago. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, the ministry, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. It's a man, I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a vaccine, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. You know, I'm a man, I'm a man. Fully support, I'm a vaccine, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. You know, vaccine, I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm, 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 I'm a man. About few days ago. I'm a man, I'm a man. A reporter, I'm a man, I'm a man. Program, I'm a man, I'm a man. The other one, I'm glad, I'm glad.
Soon, I think. I think they get to me.
Speaking. I'm sure, I'm sure. The other one, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. And I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. 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 Oh, I'm glad, I'm glad. Of course, I'm here, I'm glad, I'm glad. The most, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad. It's a lifeline subsidy. It's a, 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 a 1.4, more, it's a, a subsidy. Or six years, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a. I'm sure, I'm sure. The program, I'm a man. Maybe we can extend it for a few months. The other one, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. They get to me, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a special, I'm a special. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. 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 Oh, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man.
Soon, speaking. I think they get to me.
Soon, speaking. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. Although, I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man. And I'm a man, I'm a man. Speaking, I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. 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 I'm sure, I'm sure. I'm a man, I'm a man. 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 I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. 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 It's a FY22, speaking. I'm a man, I'm a man. 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 Subsidy, I'm a man, I'm a man. 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 I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. 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 Soon, the others, speaking.
And I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man.
I'm sure, speaking. I'm sure, I'm a man. They get to me, they get to me. I'm glad, I'm glad. Subsidy, speaking. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. Penelium Transportation Marine Authority. I'm a man, I'm a man. 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 And I'm glad, I'm glad. And I'm glad, I'm glad. 80,000, I'm a man, I'm a man. 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 And I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. And I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm a man, I'm a man. I'm a man, I'm a man. E wa i ghe l'udilou, m'sa al'dpas ra sel FY2022, i ghe l'ontmama siris pr'al'sel. K'adou m'nghe ad'adou, m'ghe d'kwasé, ra di, December, Januarin, top da, staff lamental. M'agi k'ora mal m'le, gorgik, l'girel sey. E k'ora, edou mesela tayem, wa di m'ral m'onge, m'am e spigere, ti'hal olama, ti'gide l'... ol'idiul m'am m'ng'eme, man ta'al besul. Ma m'la l'gete gas' spigere, ma flo leader, ma al'bek'la ad'ro og'uy, ma, a'ba e spigere. Ed'ha i ng'oseu, e, mal sebe edel, ed'om'ul'era at'ara, abil, e d'ok'te b'ng'ya ghe l'udilou, m'ghe k'adou m'kutmokla. M'ng'gide d'el kutmokle spigere, a'gi malo, m't'era ad'ra b'iliou, l'gete sey, et regel m't'era ad'ong'ay'ur. Lo m'gete sey, ma ad'ong'ang'el, lo m'gete shele, k'adou di ad'ra igal blou og'uy. Sula e spigere.
Sula, kabou e delegetra amb'lg'yo ke l'boniwan.
Oi, sula teal e, spigere, eti gal, madama kanay ma, kulibet sel ol pol'osau d'art'gal, ad'ra held r'gide, eti gal frontliners. Spigere, sel l'sougu m'uk'ka, sirisena ra, ablou, a k'ora r'ul'li at'og'ur, ng'il at'og'el giri. Ak'adou di soha l'oyak'te gide l'teal, ak'na let's ra, oner tiang de li restaurant d'ng'artiario, ra capital. L'offer 15% discount, m'orti ghe l'og'un, frontliners, sel weekend. Oi, di, ne personali, m'ng'ad'adou, ng'ara, di k'adou soha l'isi ma, a frontliners, l'om'esa la session r'gide l', politik'adventures se gide l', k'ora ng'il offer, l'ok'ua k'ora om'ringa s'au giri. Oi, at'ara at'ou e spigere, el ar'ag' m'... 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 e imar l'ekila, amb'lg'yo Conservation Network, 25th anniversary ra, ti'gide l', l'k'ora Conservation Network a blou. Ma, a state ramama, la'mak'tabi, a'ami ti, l'oror girela i ghe l'og'un 30,000 ra, ti'gide l'tooy. El am'onya b'biel, meras spigere, meras spigere, ma presidenta senet la k'ora ouaisel gumiu e, el am'ong'it'ag'ora ngis, bal girel, ma, di regel, m'le k'or ti'lo, m'ghe, m'ndi regel kuk'. Blou se m'ng'ar ma, fellow delegates, m'le, osegi luk'm'... k'ora ng'il at'og'ya, a'gar at'og'ra, ak'ling'el ela bl'wad' m'k'adou, a'yu dub'ngi. E spigere, m'dise gide l'k'ora, di soha l'isi e, e ghe dol'mal m'le, g'anser og'uy a ghe l'uk'ka, at'og'le medu b'ra ol'le ed.
Sula spigere. Kabou e delegetra ng'wan.
Sula spigere, ng'ul ser bl'orgaou ma, ba e spigere, ma flo leader, ma al'bek'le deleget. Di m'og'de ba, bisil'insenake spigere, ng'ora amn'amu du, b'... b'... tok'ul'gor odang se, akm'dassal ak'p'ktu, se ser kuk'girel, od'ok'se g'el girela. A ministry ra, public infrastructure in, industry, m'hameseng'tar besu. N'soha l'direkl, l'mo, m'ngrengasule la, ministry ra, pi ai, ai si ma, directora public koruk. Sel a'gal eru rak, ng'ari tiang covid, et m'ndasse m'blou belaw, l'dyob'ubu. At'og'ora ra infrastructure, m'ng, di regel, do meser ngi, w'la ekana mi a belaw ng'il, a ghe gide l'ur'ar va'astraksyon m'al'betok. Di regel, soha l'ak'ul'isam al'ri'ul'eredit, et m'ndasse m'la di regel, l'um'ra held, m'de g'el ng'ira held, m'tok'ak'ora improvement ra ablou belaw. Sula e, e delegetra ng'wan e, o'ale go, m'sau d'la i ghe l'ministry ma, nak'ul'g'it'ra, kul'g'it'ra kaou ma, pomo, og'ad'ou la minister ma director, e bol m'rou la igal elevator, elevator tiang blay. Ma, on'ed'era raq, di requesti di di'ha l'm'rou. Et tiang blay a three story, tok'la ad'adele l'm'ring'ri, t'lam'le mia'k mora on'ed'el floor. Oi, m'ng, l'm'rou le, di regel, dikmedong m'oniya s'ora, ma k'rou, se g'del mer belaw, ma, l'be, el sebil kuk'om'is et tiang, di'ha, b'od'ong'ul'le mia'k la stairs t'ati masra elevator. E, e deleget ma, m'ad'adou, ur'tim m'asou ng'ya al'dou, di'ha la hausel kuk'ka har'ora tiang kuk'et liseng'ultak'argide l'mor'ob' b'eliyo. K'msula. Awlal'ad'ir go open, m'asin mislenis se ghe di m'na'm'du la, shernariya session, bon, tovo. Al'sougu m'ng'ya ghe floor e, gal'el ng'il bod'os subjectu kon, e kuk'tom'esa urere de bod'og'ur ra, urri next week.
Oi, spira g'era, me g'am'uxen, spira dik'tu egal t'blon, spira, m'nasa l'ak'ou putrela. Al'g'uk'ul'g'it'ra gas' spira, l'sen di'ha mesasel appropriate k'ami ti'ra om'isbe el, el k'ora, m'zou ra ministry at'ss'is, se b'od'ong'aw d'ng'el girela igal tel mal ra'ra, la igal m'ses, bal m'lar ra'ra, am'pactro. Ke ng'ora di'la d'ng'el, m'ghe ng'ariya og'ul'ngi re, m'k'adou m'ng'el washe turwata'al, ad'ak' turwata'al, grupa, m'lesse b'igal m'la. Lasta, eti no m'k'as'badan e spigere, ng'ariya t'blon, m'le hap'ng'ng'ar, awan am'ses, bal tiang, sel intersection. E awan ak'uk'starra m'abdou l'g'ak'la, e m't'... m'lo ng'il, m't'ngar sel kuk'm'kar'ak' m'ra m'la, e im'ong'am'ses. M'de k'adou l'se tiang m'lses, m'ndi m'ng'ing'is'es bal'ouvong. N'di'ga m'ng'el, l'igal, m'la m'ses, bal am'pactro da, ng'ariya ad'el m'alesse. Mal sou, k'ami ti'ra, sel og'ul'ong'el, mal sou, ng'ang'ariya putrel, inkrisa penalty, fine, mora ad'el, m'ur'ra o'ysel. Es'w'le regel, l'uspete teal e bo, k'ot'irak' k'as'ul'itra, alucio ob'harbaw. Di regel m'le staff r'gide r'tiang ol'bil. Es'w'ere g'era, l'orala ghe d'ad'adou, e mal m'lerig'minder, m'ose m'ol'k'ora, a leader si v'tiang blay, m'om'dassura, agora expansion r'tiang bandui d'ra, k'ami'uk tiang. Len k'adou k'ora, igal teknal, innovation r'teknal s'ide m'rala m'ol, e w'al'ge g'rei, ma pip'la tayem, k'adou k'ora m'ot'ak'um'la. M'ng, se k'ora m'lerig'minder shell IT before al'... al'bo'la'la retire tiang blay. Akdi k'andrasul'it r'ngi, ouaisel se gide l', k'ora m'ul'desem, in future, e bod'op' preles congress, se gide tiang m'lam'ou i library. N'di'ga i ghe e spigere, bo me g'am'uxen, m'da bris'es ra session, l'gide subjectu kon o'tche.
Se gide l'am'uxen, bris'es, k'as' subjectu kon o'tche, e m'la second date, i ghe l'ong'emb'ul o'ysel du oi. Onto, nam'ou o'ysel.